Okay. Yep. We're good? Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna take it?
What music do you want?
Okay.
Yeah. Rio, can you give us the National Anthem?
Oh, yeah. Very loud.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have, you have some music you can play or something?
What do we, we face this way or what do we do?
The World Wrestling Federation music.
No, it's gonna be very calm. Very calm. This is the song that unites us.
Yes.
And that makes us.
The blood, sweat and tears of our true Father.
You can't take a knee.
You get shot on the spot.
You can take a knee, but you don't get a pain check.
And you don't get back up.
What are your refreshments? That's my first question.
Refreshments?
Yeah.
Uh, okay popcorn, may- maybe there's then an entrepreneur.
No food in the sanctuary. No food in the sanctuary, except water.
It's the water. You can't have the water.
According to Greg.
That sounds authoritarian.
Yes, it does. It's intended to.
Hey.
I'm gonna just start singing.
I don't think this is gonna work.
It's raining outside.
Really?
Let's just begin with a prayer then. What do you, what do you think?
Okay.
Well.
Got it?
No, okay.
Okay.
Someone pray.
President.
Okay, let us pray. Dear His heavenly Father, we truly thank you for all your love and guidance to us. Father, we are truly so grateful, Father, to, to be accepted into your lineage, the lineage of our true Father, the second King and Queen of Chonokok. Father, please guide this meeting. We can understand each other better and be free to move forward as, as our King is, is urging us to do. I thank you and report this name, our rich and dear parents, our blessed central family. Achoo. Okay, welcome everybody. I just would like to make, explain a few things. So, first of all, I wanna mention that actually Janine Takahashi suggested this idea. Hi, Janine. Hi. Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sure there are a few others who suggested the idea of the town hall. So, we thought it was a good idea and then that's why we're having this today. So, our intention is to, to answer every question that is asked, or if we can't answer it, we'll explain why, why we can't answer it. I would like to let everyone have a chance to ask all their questions, but we wanna take turns. So, the, our idea is that each person can ask one or two questions at a time and get, hopefully get some kind of answer, and then move on to other people, and then we'll circle back. So, if you have more questions, just be patient, 'cause we wanna give everyone a chance to, you know, ask one or two questions. So, you'll, you'll get a chance to ask, ask all your questions. We, we don't need to, you know, shout or get, you know, let's, we're all brothers and sisters. We all, we all, we all love true parents, right? So, that's, that's our assumption here. And, yeah, so Lowell Elunson has agreed to be the moderator, so thank you Lowell, really appreciate that. King Lowell. And Tim will introduce our staff and our, their job descriptions, and then Lourdes has something she wants to say as well. So, Lowell, why don't you take over and I, I guess Tim has something.
Welcome, everybody. So, I know in some cases probably people have been putting a lot of thought already into questions that they want to, to ask, but if you haven't, if you're not one of those that have already, you know, invested a lot of energy, let's not take this time for granted. If you have any, any kind of question or, or you're interested in what direction Sanctuary Ministry is going, what's happening on the worldwide scale, these guys are in the international meetings, they have a lot of understanding about what's going on around the world. So, I know some people are thinking about what's happening here in Sanctuary community, but also there's a lot going on out there. So, if the, if the Holy Spirit moves you, don't hesitate to, to ask any kind of question about all the wonderful things that are happening in the providence right now, 'cause I, I know there's a lot, there's a lot out there. So, it'd be inspiring to hear, hear about those things as well. So, originally we were, Richard said we wanted to do like two questions per person so that we can keep, keep it moving and everybody will have a, a chance. Originally, we were gonna move the microphone around to, that the microphone would be brought to you, but instead, I think for, to make it a little easier, you can see there's a microphone on the stand there. So, if you have your questions, just get up and go to the microphone, so we won't be passing the microphone around. You'll have to get up and, and go to the, to that position to ask your question. And I didn't know, maybe the panel now, if I could ask a first question to the panel, when people are addressing their question, should they address the person that they wanna get the answer from, or will you guys decide amongst yourselves who's best or most qualified to, to give the answer? How will that work?
I, I think we, we may have, I think we should decide who can, who can answer it best.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they don't necessarily need to add, address a specific person. So, that's just a guideline as you're preparing your questions. Maybe ask your question and they'll, they'll decide who's the most qualified to answer.
Shall I go ahead and introduce the staff?
Yeah.
Okay. Ted, it'll be just a minute. I'm Tim Elder and I joined the staff in 2014, and I was actually the first one. And I was actually, after Hyung Jin came to Pennsylvania in 2013, I was asked to come here earlier, but I kept resisting, and I repent for that. And I finally, I came here in June of 2014. And for a while, I was the only member of the staff, but in the, about the spring of 2015, it became obvious to the King that there was much more to do than I could possibly handle alone. And so, a second person was brought onto the staff, and that was Greg. And he took over the finances, he took over building management, facilities management, and he took over personnel issues, new business development, and also he, in his job description here, he calls himself the garbage man. But I hope we're all garbage people, by the way. I hope we all, when we see garbage, we pick it up. But anyway, Greg certainly does far more than his share of that. He's, make sure that the garbage is put out there in the dumpster and it, and it's picked up properly. Then, the third person to come on was Lourdes, because as Greg and I were working, we started to do more and more events. In 2016, we actually, until, through 2016, we were only doing two holy days a year. Two, basically two, two holy days. Actually, 2015, I'm sorry, 2015, we're only doing two holy days a year. And, and we were not doing that many events, but we wanted to do more, and we needed someone to coordinate those events. And so, Lourdes was brought on for that. And also, another job she was given was to be my assistant in the world, world missions, because when, when Greg came on, I stayed on as the world missions department head. And we wanted to expand our, the King's foundation throughout the world. And so, Lourdes has been doing that. And she's actually done the lion's share of the work of that. I've been focusing on Korea and Japan, but Europe, Africa, South America, I would say that, and also Oceania, I would say that Lourdes done a lion's share of that, of that work. And then more recently, she's been given another assignment, which is to coordinate guests who come on to the King's Report. We've had, she's brought on a New York Times bestseller, she's brought on one of the, some of the most prominent people in this area. And then the, the last person among us to come on was, was Richard. And Richard Panzer is responsible for outreach, coordination, and education for Unification and Sanctuary Brothers and Sisters in North America. He has developed a series of presentations, videos, and essays explaining true fathers' teachings about successor and eighth grade textbooks. He also communicates with the Sanctuary Coordinators and Brothers and Sisters in the USA and Canada each week, and shares reports of Sanctuary activities around the world with them. He currently is working with the Kerry Williams and Sanctuary USA Education Director to finish, review, and revise the English OSTP Teachers, Teachers Manual, updating the two-day Divine Principle lectures with OSTP content. Okay, so that is my introduction of the staff. Okay, back to you. Back to you.
Lowell. Lowell. Okay, so let's go right into our questions.
Actually, I think there's one more item on the agenda, as Lourdes would like to say something.
Oh.
Yep. You, you don't have a copy of this?
I do.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just am deeply honored to be here, working with these brothers and sisters. There's one thing I wanna say to our brother Jamal Johnson, he's not here today, but I wanna to ask for him to apologize, my apologies to him. I've said some things online and in person to him that he felt across the line. I said that he disrespected the King, and I sincerely don't think he does. I think he's a, a good brother, that God has chosen to be here. And I really am sorry, Jamal, for I hurt you. And thank you. For also brothers and sisters, I did say, recently I posted some things online that I'm not very proud of. I use an alias, I actually have two. My apologies, I feel sad that I used that time that is actually my Sabbath, but I felt that I shouldn't have done that. You know, I, it's not, it's not me, it was something, just crazy thing that came to my mind. And I want for you to please accept my apologies for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lourdes. Okay, okay, we can begin question and answers then.
Okay, Ted?
Maybe one thing, just another last little bit of housekeeping. Everybody, of course, here, we know, we know you, but as you give your question, I think this is being recorded and maybe some people will pick it up later. Why don't you introduce yourself before you do your question?
I'm Ted O'Grady. Feel honored to be here also. Feel a lot of love for everyone here, Lourdes. I've grown to love Lourdes. Got to know her a bit, and aside from the controversy that's going on, I'm not really taking sides, but I feel that everyone here is motivated from the heart of God. That's, that's for sure. That's a beautiful thing, okay? So, I'm a new, I'm a new guy here, I've moved into the area recently, you were very kind to welcome me in, thank you very much, okay? And that's again, a personal decision to do that. So, my, what's upon my heart is about outreach.
Yeah.
'Cause I've, have some contacts outside, having been in the UK and started with Sanctuary over there, starting our own ministry over there in East London, then coming over here, and then connecting with some of the other Sanctuary Brothers and Sisters outside, particularly Kevin and Tammy Brugman in Dallas. And we've kinda discussed things about Christian outreach. They're a couple, they're kings and queens. King, King Kevin, King Tammy, Queen Tammy, right? And they are members of the Gateway Church in Dallas, Texas, which has a tremendous outreach ministry, particularly a political expression of that. So, I guess my question is, and knowing Richard from 30 years ago in AFC days, how do, how does the Sanctuary Church see itself as a political expression now, in this times? What, what is the inspiration, or also the, the connection out to the other Sanctuary ministries in the country and world? How are we gonna express ourselves politically? How are we gonna motive, how are we gonna put our faith into practice to impact the society?
Okay, Tim, Joe.
I think soon after I came here, the King described Sanctuary Church to me this way, that, you know, you'll have to check with him to make sure I get this right, but I believe he told me that we are a free association of blessed families, each of whom have their own ministries. And the church is a place where people are trained to become able to do ministries, or to, to, to become inspired to do certain ministries, or to develop further their abilities to, to do certain ministries. And so, I think what Ted just described is a, a ministry that can be taken up by individual blessed families. Recently, the King has been, through the King's Report, has been encouraging us to become more involved in our local politics. And, and I know that, I think he's talking to some people about running for county commissioner here in this area, for example, and other ways. And I think each blessed family can, as they are praying about their ministries, you know, and each family can have more than one, this is perhaps the one thing that pray about. That's my answer.
Yeah, I think, well, the King has also been emphasizing, you know, really empowering blessed families to pursue their passions, and I think that's one of the fundamental things that really inspires me about the King's ministry here is to, the whole purpose is to empower people to go out and do their own YouTube channels, and to begin to attract like-minded people to whatever that passion is. I know at our, at our farm project, for example, that's our passion, the blessed families that are gathered there, it's a grassroots thing, it's not, some people say it's owned by Sanctuary Church, it's not. You know, it's really, it's really blessed families that feel passionate about intentional community, and about organic lifestyle farming, and the King has been nothing but supportive of that. And I think that's an example of what, you know, it's healthy. It's, it's healthy for us not to be centralized in our thinking here at the church, but to follow the example of decentralization through home church and tribal Messiah-ship. I think that's the success of the King's ministry, if we can all be empowered to pursue what we feel really driven to pursue. And I think that's a, that's a healthy church on a global scale. And so, I think that's what, that's what Father has always taught, he's always fought, you know, taught tribal Messiah-ship, and that, that's really on a local level. Next, next person?
One or two? One or two questions or?
Yeah.
But introduce yourself.
Yeah, let's go to two.
Okay.
If you have many, do two, and then let the next person come to the mic.
Okay.
And when, when the mic's free again, continue on.
All right, well, I'm Janine Takahashi, and I'm in New Jersey, and I come here every Sunday, so. I have a question that deals with, I guess, Lourdes's recent online indiscretions and, you know, taking aliases, and I'm really glad that you actually apologized for that, you know, publicly. It's a very good thing that you did that. But I have, I'm, I'm very concerned that that kind of behavior, even though we all make mistakes, but if this happens again, what will be the consequences? You know, asking maybe to, to Richard, because you are kind of the leader for the American, I guess, are you for the US?
Actually, I, I am, I am not, uh...
Not in charge of?
I'm not in charge of anybody.
All right.
I, I, Tim, I...
He's my boss.
He's the eldest, so...
Well, if that, if that happened again, or other people were caught doing that again, you know, what would you, what would you do?
First of all, Lourdes's activities in her Facebook discussion groups is full force, is a ministry that has been blessed by the King, but it is her personal ministry. Just as Greg is doing Blue Stone Farms, Lourdes is doing this ministry online. And so, just if, if Greg were to do something that people found objectionable at the Blue Stone Farms, the church would not get involved with that, he would have to handle it himself.
I understand that, yeah.
So, I think this also, in Lourdes's case as well, I think is properly dealt with by the people who are relating to that ministry. And I, I don't see a need for me or the church to become involved in that.
Actually, I, I have a comment. You know, I think many people are expecting the Sanctuary Church to make a response to everything that Lourdes does.
Yeah.
And, but let me just...
No, that's not what I expected.
No, I, no, I understand that, but I just want you to know, I'm, I'm just being honest here, okay? Even though there's been no quote official response, I, I would like everyone here to know that on numerous occasions, I've let Lourdes know when I felt that she was being an idiot, okay? I'm just being honest here, okay? So, there, don't, don't assume that just because we don't say anything publicly, that... I, I, I read Facebook, I see what people write, I try to be aware of what people are saying, and if I see something that I think, I mean, to be honest here, I, I, when I found out that Lucia Nasserith was, was not somebody else, I found out it was actually Lourdes. And when I found out that she was posting about the case with Lourdes and Jamal, I, I, I felt personally deceived, personally deceived.
Me too.
Personally, really, really outraged. And I, I let her know that. So, and, you know, and because I, I love Lourdes as my sister, I urged her to, well, apologize, but, but also I urged her to really, like, reevaluate the way that she, that she interacts with, with, with me and other people. So, I think have a, people have a right to let her know, or if I do something that you, that you think is stupid and irresponsible, you know, I have a phone number, you can call me 24/7, and you can tell me, Richard, you're an idiot, okay? So, you are free to do that. And so, we wanna have that type of openness, but don't expect the King or, or the Sanctuary Church as an organization to make an official proclamation about all these little things. 'Cause hopefully, as Hyung Jin has said, we should be able to kinda resolve, some of this is inevitable, you know, I mean, we're all different and so on, but hopefully, we can do what Hyung Jin said this morning, which is to aim outward, okay? There's a lot of satans out there and devils out there that we should be shooting at, not at each other, right? But if you wanna complain, call me or call, you know, let, you know, let us know.
Um, there's another part to that, which is if some, if it continues, and if somebody else is found doing something similar or whatever, and you, somebody actually breaks the law, I mean, does unprincipled things, how do you fire them? How do we fire them as a, move, as a church, as a group? How do we do that?
All of us here serve at the pleasure of the King. We were brought on for the King, by the King, and we serve at his pleasure. So, you complain to the King, and you tell the King that you think that so-and-so ought to be fired, and he will make a decision.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think, you know, if people feel a little bit intimidated going to the King on such matters, then certainly I think anybody here you can approach, you know, if there's some serious issue going on, we should be made aware of those, there shouldn't be anything hidden.
Right.
And I think transparency is what we're all seeking to do. So, if somebody's doing something unprincipled, you can certainly come and see me, or, or anybody...
But if it's you?
If it's me, then see Richard or Tim.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or you can see me first and say, hey Greg, you know, as, as my brother, I'm really concerned about you. And like Richard said, I also approached Lourdes, I know Cook Jinam also approached Lourdes on this alias name, and really came down hard on her for this. So, it's not like she's going, she's being let off easy. Actually, a lot of people have really, I feel like in my relationship with Lourdes, I'm much more honest with her now, so I can, I can speak plainly now, whereas at the beginning it was a little bit difficult. But, you know, as you get to know somebody, you really love them, and you care for them, you know how much the King loves, loves a person, and you want the best for that person. So, I think, you know, I think as we mature as a community, it's best to go face to face. And if that doesn't work, then go to somebody who knows that person well, and then maybe from that angle, that person can be reached.
Yeah, that's, that's good. All right.
Should I give myself one?
Yeah, okay. But I'm letting somebody else have, I mean, I have still some more ideas about that, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, please come back for any remaining questions. Who'd like to go next? Robert?
I do have two questions, and I'll start with the first one. Has anyone ever sat down, or have you ever stated amongst yourselves clearly, what is the fundamental purpose of the organization called Sanctuary Church? Straight out.
I think I just mentioned it, that we are a free association of blessed central families, each of whom have a ministry of their own, and the role of the church is to train people to, and educate people to perform those ministries.
Okay, so if I understand that, Tim, and, and correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding... Oh, by the way, I'm Robert Pecal. Forgot that. The purpose of Sanctuary Church is to train people to do their own ministries.
To train and educate, yes.
To train and educate them, so they're able to do their own ministries. Okay. All right, thank you.
I would say also, if I could add something, that we're also a house of worship, where the free association of blessed families can come together and worship God together. I think that's an important part of, church is a house of worship. And I'm a firm believer in the Kingdom of Heaven, these houses of worship will continue forever and ever, because it's, it's a wonderful thing to come together as brothers and sisters and praise the Lord. So, I think, I think there's always gonna be a place where 50, 100, 1,000 people gather together and sing songs and hear an inspirational sermon from somebody who, who has a message to share. I think the purpose of churches also, Sanctuary churches also for that purpose, to be a, a vehicle in which the King can communicate his message. And we're all an audience of the King. I mean, I was thinking about that this morning, if he was speaking to an empty room, that would be, that would be a different spirit, you know? But the fact that you come here to support the King, some of you driving two hours each time to come to attend the King is a beautiful thing, and I think it's because of that heart of attendance that the Holy Spirit comes down. If the King was here alone, how tragic that would be. So, I'm really personally very grateful for everybody who makes the effort to come here and to really just offer themselves up. And to me, that's also the purpose of the Sanctuary Church in Newfoundland.
Okay, staying on that first question, what I'm hearing is I'm hearing different perspectives of what the purpose of Sanctuary Church is.
No, I don't think what he said is in any way contradictory of what my, it just adds.
I didn't say it was in contradiction, I said it's a different perspective.
Okay.
Okay? In other words, if you look at something from different angles, you see different things. Okay? And that's exactly how I meant it. Just as a suggestion, I think it would be good to formulate a clear statement of purpose at some point to publish, you know, and how people, you know, could, not saying it locks you in or defines you, but it's just something, because that's been a bit nebulous when people have asked me, what is the purpose of Sanctuary Church, you know, personally? The other thing is, on that question, the follow-up part is, okay, given the purposes that were stated, how does Sanctuary Church, the leadership, see they're going to accomplish that practically? In other words, you have a purpose or a vision, how do you accomplish that practically? What, how do you operate to do that? Go ahead.
Can I begin? Use the word leadership, and I don't know if we're leadership. We were brought on as the King's staff to help the King, so I'm not sure what is meant by, by leadership. I think each blessed central family here is a leader in their own ministry, so we're kind of a gathering of leaders in that sense. And, but, but getting beyond that word, how, I think that the perspective that I introduced can be accomplished, I think it's being accomplished now...
In other words, you have a purpose or a vision, how do you accomplish that practically? How do you operate to do that? Go ahead.
Can I begin? Use the word "leadership," and I don't know if we're leadership. We were brought on as the King's staff to help the King. So I'm not sure what is meant by "leadership." I think each blessed inter family here is a leader in their own ministry, so we're kind of a gathering of leaders in that sense. But getting beyond that word, how I think that the perspective that I introduced can be accomplished. I think it's being accomplished now by the King through his sermons and his, the education that he gives us through his King's Report and sermons, and all the sermons that he gives. I've been given, I know I've been given a completely new perspective on the New Testament in terms of the Kingdom Gospel. This has really been an eye-opener for me, and I'm sure many other people share that experience. And the, I think the... Also, another way in which this is being accomplished is that there is now a atmosphere or a place where people are free to think in terms of creating their own ministries. That was not true before. You were assigned a ministry, but now you pray, you take your remas, and you think about it, you talk about it in your family, and you try to come up with a way, a ministry that you can perform, that each family can perform, that will contribute to the coming of the Kingdom.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, maybe "leadership" was the wrong word, but "staff" means you facilitate the desire. So in that sense, I meant the question.
Thank you.
I think HSU is another good example of what's developed. Not that we necessarily had very much to do with that, that was really Carrie and the Queen, I think, really developing that online curriculum that, you know... And that's another good example of, you know, of leadership development, I would say.
Okay. And the final point on that is, given the staff to facilitate, then from my perspective, the staff should open doors and not shut down people's participation or dictate people's participation in various avenues or things. Am I understanding that correctly?
Agreed, yes.
Okay. And in that sense, I honestly have to say that I have personally experienced with the staff being shut out. Specifically, anything to do with the DP or anything like that for various, you know, deals. I won't go into the details, I'm not here to bring that up, but I just want to make that point. And it's a point that others have made to me, is when they come to the staff, particular people in the staff, they feel that they are shut down, pushed out, or rejected. And that's a reality. And I'm just bringing it up, I'm not here to debate it, I'm not here to dig into the details, but it has an effect on people.
Actually, I'd like to respond. This is an area where about, let me see, I guess two months ago, I saw the need to restructure our educational development efforts for the United States, you know, the English-speaking world, I guess. So we... There have been some changes, and I spoke with Hyun Jin about appointing Carrie Williams to be, to coordinate our education development efforts, because I really wanted to develop... You know, we're claiming that we're offering OSDP education, but I felt like we had not begun to really, really have give and take with the content from Reverend Yu, and so I don't like advertising something that is not true. To me, that damages trust. So, and I have to say that, working with Carrie, she is an incredibly serious sister. She is, I mean, I... Some of you already know this, but she is relentless in, like, really going to the original Korean and having, you know, Andy Lauesberg, I think some of you know Andy, he'll write, like, a whole page about one sentence, about how to translate one sentence. That is, that's how kind of careful he is. And we are going through the entire set of Reverend Yu's 500 slides to make sure that the English translation reflects what the Korean says. And then there are even some questions that we have regarding some of the content of the slides and how they're organized. So we are really digging into this. You know, it's taking a little while. I apologize for that, because I wish we had it done, you know, yesterday or last year. But I believe that we made a very good choice, and then we have other people who are helping, and so I'm hoping that in the near future, you're going to see several new presentations. I apologize that we promised you the English OSDP manual last July, when Reverend Yu actually gave, that's what we said to those of you attended, and we lied to you. We did not keep our promise, and to me, that really, I don't want that to happen again. To me, I don't like promising something and then breaking my promise, that I don't want to be like that kind of person. So I apologize to each one of you who came to that OSDP seminar, and you were led to believe that you would have the manual, and we did not keep our promise to you. And so we're not going to do that again. And whatever we say, we're going to mean what we say. So I... And Carrie Williams is a really wonderful person to lead this.
So is there a role for Robert in that effort?
I can talk to Carrie about that, yes.
But anyway, thank you. Well, we'll save the other one for maybe later, if someone else has some...
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, is there anybody that has another question, for your own question? Yep, Louis, please.
I'm TLP, I'm a being post. Hi, my name is Louis Pearlman. I am responsible for the Philadelphia area, by extension, the state of Pennsylvania, but I don't really need to be the whole state of Pennsylvania. And also, I've been transcribing the sermons, Sunday sermons, for the past year and a half. This question's... I look at the panel, so it's more directed for Lourdes than the rest of you. A lot of the people here, or across the global ministry, are split between their families right now, where one spouse is directed toward being here in the Sanctuary Church, and another one is not, still in the Family Federation. So I've been blessed that my wife has made that move recently, not 100%, but I think it needs to be... I like to get opinions about that, and at least one of you should be Lourdes, since she has that unique perspective on the stage. Thank you.
Yeah, I have been witnessing for a while now, for two years, and my main witnessing person is my husband. So I've been trying, you know, it's been very hard to see that Family Federation has grabbed a hold of some brothers and sisters, especially my husband, they're right in his neck, you know, and it's very hard to pull him out. So what I can say, you know, my husband is a very sincere person with great faith in our True Father, and in my case, we feel that both of us love True Father so much, and on that, we're totally united. So the other things, unfortunately, it's minor detail for us, and we will work this out, I'm determined. I pledge that to my Heavenly Father many times. So in my case, also, I feel like, I'm not sure about every one situation, but my husband has paid for me to go to Korea, I think maybe five or seven times. Two 40-day workshop, 21-day Father's Sangha ceremony. My husband was working full-time to be able to afford to give me the money to go. You know, I went to Las Vegas many times, I was there with Father many times, and I actually failed in teaching him that content that would now be so helpful to him. So I feel extremely sad in my heart, because, yeah, you know, all the things that we're doing seems to be, keeping myself very busy, but inside of me, that is my priority, to, you know, to really help my family, help my husband. So that's all I can say about that. Thank you.
Somebody else wants to respond to that as well, to what you recommend, advice, thoughts?
Yeah, in addressing that issue of a family being divided, in our situation, my older daughter is married to the son Evangelica Selli, and she's in charge of the Women's Federation for World Peace. And prior to the events of Father's passing, we were able to talk about certain things. And now, she's being, you know, suddenly she got a huge salary boost as soon as it became evident and opened that we're involved with Sanctuary. So I'm not going to question the Family Fed's motivation for that, but when we do gather as a family, we try to keep it only about family, only about grandchildren or children, and keep the perspective as broad and general as possible, because you know you're not going to win on either case. So we go by the blood bonds and let it go at that, because if you go any further, you're just going to make further divisions. So, you know, when it becomes about family, and if something were to happen to them, of course, we'd be there for them. But it is tragic that you have these situations where we know they're being deceived, we know they're being manipulated, and you can't say a thing about it.
Actually, I want to make one more comment just quickly about this issue. I feel very strongly that we should not have a two-class system within the Sanctuary community. Some people say, "Oh, if you're a blessed couple under True Father's authority who are wearing crowns, you're citizens." But if you're not in that situation, and your spouse is not part of Sanctuary, then you're not a citizen. I totally reject that, that's a divisionist theology, okay? All of us came from the Satanic world, and by God's grace, we are engrafted into Christ's lineage, okay? We're all in that same boat, okay? So, and if you are in position of King and Queen, then instead of being arrogant and boasting about that, why don't you help your brother and sister, and help witness to the spouse, and help, help the brother or sister who is struggling to educate their spouse, instead of being arrogant and boastful? And to me, it is totally wrong to have that attitude, and I really hate that attitude, I have to say that.
I'd like to respond a little bit to, although, in my case, my wife and I are both in Sanctuary, I have dealt with this issue when some people have come to me asking me the same question, so I've prayed about it, and trying to helping those, help those people. And I think the answers that I've come up with so far is that, first of all, the person who is connected to the Father and through the three kingships has to maintain that faith. That's the first thing. That person is, whether it's the husband or the wife, that person is in the able position. And you could even say that person, in terms of the faith, is in the subject partner position, even if it is the wife. And then, and this, by the way, all that's not your case, Louis, but I find more sisters have this problem than brothers. That's been my experience. In other words, the wife is here, the husband is not. I found that to be more common, in my experience, or at least maybe it's just the wife that are coming to me, I don't know. But maintaining the unity and proper relationship between the spouses is the next thing that's When we receive the blessing, we become one in both God's eyes and in Satan's eyes. These are not Father's words, these are my words, all right? That's just my way of understanding. Satan knows that he can attack either one by attacking the other. So I've often found that when I'm going through something, my wife is going through the same thing, or something similar. It's amazing how that works, you know? So if the wife or the one who is connected to the three kingships maintains that connection, then the husband or the other spouse will also receive a benefit, shall we say, from that? God's guidance, I think, that's what I meant, God's grace and God's guidance. Eventually, you know, we... It's God that's going to change that person. And our role is to create the condition or the channel, the foundation, through which God can work.
Okay. Lisa's got her hand up. Go ahead, go right ahead.
It was a question. Actually, just wanted to follow up with...
Introduce yourself first, please.
Who are you, Lisa?
I'm Lisa Ellenson, wife of the mighty Lowell Ellenson.
Thanks for making that clear.
You got it, babe. Okay. Y'all stop now, it's serious. Yeah, just to follow up with Tim, I know we have a lot of internal struggles that we're going through, but in terms of understanding that it's actually God who's going to change everybody, that's what I hold my hope out for, because He's never failed in that way. So my question that I have is, I guess directed more for Richard and anyone else who would know, is we recently had you all going to Europe to debate the Family Fed and their minions, and there was going to be a follow-up program that was going to include, I think it's Switzerland, that was the idea, anyway. But I was wondering what the progress of that was, you know, on the macro level, that if we're going to shoot outwardly, we need to, we want to take care of the Antichrists first, I suppose.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's a good question. You know, so just so you know, the collegiate group in Antwerp, Belgium, they are going to publish the journal of all the papers given at the conference. We recently sent a donation of about $1,200, I believe, to help with the publication of the journal. So I expect to find out soon when that will be published. The journal will be sent out to about 500 different seminaries, universities, and schools of religion in Europe, Africa, North America, and Asia, and anywhere, I don't know if I left any continent out, but it's going to be sent out very widely, which to me is a very good thing, that we have a chance, at least in the papers that Carrie Williams and I gave, to, they can understand what the perspective is of the second King of Chano Guk, and why he felt the need to start his ministry here in Pennsylvania. Then as far as another conference goes, there was an offer from Dr. Eileen Barker to host a conference in London upon conversation with the representatives from UTS and Family Federation. I think they had no interest in being in a conference together with us, because we punched their nose and bloodied their nose. So I don't think, there wasn't a lot of interest from their side. So, and then, actually, Hyun Jin actually felt it would be more valuable to have a conference on the peace police, peace militia, and that would take place... Initially, they were talking about Lausanne, Switzerland, I believe.
Lausanne, yes. Originally, it was, we were thinking of Geneva, but the way the logistics working out, it's a, maybe this is a good time for us to tell people about that, because I recently got an email from someone in Europe saying, "How come Lourdes is planning a conference in Switzerland?" Lourdes is not planning this conference, all right? But Lourdes does not, she does a lot, but she does not do everything. There is a, this is the King's request that, and so Christian Seiburger, the Continental Leader in Europe, has teamed up with two other national leaders in Europe to plan and execute a conference in Lausanne, Switzerland, on the peace militia, peace military. The idea being that, you know, because the Swiss military model is a kind of a, is one that we often refer to... on the peace militia, peace military. The idea being that, you know, because the Swiss military model is kind of a, is one that we often refer to in terms of the peace police, police militia, that is why that's being done. And I think that January 20th, as I recall, is the date that they are planning to do that, yeah. This is done by the King's request, but it's being done by Europeans in Europe.
I guess the follow-up—
And they're also raising the funds for it.
Oh, the follow-up question, I would like to, if there was a suggestion along those lines, if it's going to be the peace police, peace militia, if we could, because this is an interest, and it's close to my heart, is, years ago, we went to Los Angeles, I mean, Las Vegas, and I did a talk in front of the Women's Federation Assembly about, and the topic there was sexual trafficking of women. If there is some way we could address more, or align more with people who are fighting against pedophiles, sex trafficking, in a real way, like including law enforcement, military, people like that?
You and Lowell.
I would do it in a heartbeat.
Well, there you go. You and Lowell, that's your ministry.
Before we leave that topic, I'd like to just make a little comment. If you're not familiar with the organization called Cessner, that's the organization that sponsored the conference that they attended. And this is the, I think it is about the highest premier organization on new religions. They've been around for a long time, a long time, and they are the authority, the many academic all around the world. They're viewed as having the most accurate understanding of new religions. So, that's, it's a big deal. Do we have another question? If we move along, Gideon, I see your hand is up. And as he makes his way to the mic, come on, everybody. Dig into those brain cells, turn on those brain cells. I know probably everybody's got a question that, and no question is too small. Let's hear from as many as we can. Thank you, Gideon.
Hey, everyone, my name is Gideon Rowche. I am a public official, like everyone else here in Sanctuary Church. And, what? I don't have much responsibility as much as these guys do.
What's your question?
But, yep. This is a question that I already know the answer to, but I think it's really good for us to get to know each other, just like what Richard said earlier, for us to get to know each other. Right, you said that earlier? And, yeah, so it's an answer that I do already know, and I think, hopefully, this could be a process that we could get to learn.
What's the question?
Yes, I got you, okay.
Then we'll ask you for the answer.
Got you, all right, all right. So, I'd like to ask each one of you, are we sovereign citizens of Changelukk?
Yes!
They had no idea I was going to ask this. I didn't tell anyone what I was going to ask.
My answer is, I don't know. Next.
I don't know.
Okay, I'd like to answer a little bit more than, that's like a two-word answer. Okay, okay, you're asking if we are sovereign citizens of Changelukk?
Right.
Okay, so, then, okay, there are different ways to think about this, about this question. Okay, so what is Changelukk? And then, if you refer to the Constitution of the United States of Changelukk, that's actually a constitution for a real nation, okay? So, are we citizens of a real nation that has been established? The answer is no, okay? On the other hand, are we, are we citizens of, in a spiritual sense, of God's kingdom? Then you could say we've been accepted into the Messiah's lineage, and we are, we've been appointed as, the Second King of Changelukk has appointed us as kings and queens, okay? So, now, I don't think that anybody is actually ruling a, I mean, Kyle Toffey might be ruling a kingdom, because he actually has, he actually has land and sovereignty over, I think, six locations. But, you know, most of us, I guess I am exercising sovereignty, real sovereignty over one acre piece of land in Milford, Pennsylvania, where my family lives. So, I think I'm, I have sovereignty over that property, although I am still subject to the laws of Milford, the township of Milford, and the Pike's County. So, you know, when you ask that question, it sounds like a very simple question, but I would say, in a spiritual sense, we've certainly all been accepted and appointed as kings and queens of Changelukk, okay? And I think, I will say this. I believe that all of us are in training to be sovereign citizens of a real nation. And let me, I'm going to be a little bit blunt in my answer here for a second. Okay, we could actually have a real nation of Changelukk that follows the Constitution of the United States Changelukk that Hyunjin gave to us. And it could actually be a kingdom of hell, okay? And let me tell you why I am saying that. Because a nation is, there's a structure of a nation, and then there's the character, the character of the citizens of a nation, okay? You could have the perfect system, the best system, I mean, the Changelukk Constitution, if you look at it, the whole Constitution is designed to limit power, to limit the central federal power, to limit the power of banks, and it's ingenious in its intent to limit the possibility of what Hyunjin calls political Satanism. However, if you have people who are not serious about their relationship with God, who cheat on their spouses, who are dishonest in their relationships, and who are accusing of everyone around them, I would not want to live in that nation, and I will not, I will not be part of that nation. Okay, so, I mean, I hear a lot of people saying, you know, "I'm a citizen of Changelukk," and the spirit that they are saying this, to me, is, my honest feeling is that they are not expressing gratitude to Christ, because any type of position that we have is because of Christ. It's not because you're so great, or I'm so great, that we, you know, we deserve something, and, you know, we've got all these rights, and you, you, you know, to me, there's like an accusing spirit that I want to have nothing to do with, okay? So, do you understand what I'm saying? We're in training, we're in training. And the Bible, and Father's words, and Hyunjin's words are training materials so that we can actually be good citizens of the nation of Changelukk.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, when I hear that question, I say yes, because spiritually, legally, no, spiritually, yes. I think we are developing a mindset of what it means to be a citizen of the Kingdom of Heaven. And that, you know, we're all, we all come from being in bondage to the Satanic thinking and the Satanic world. We all have been slaves. So, what's it going to take to liberate ourselves and one day create this nation? Is going to first, the prerequisite of that is a free mindset, a relationship with God that sees ourselves as citizens of the kingdom. So, I would say a resounding, resounding yes. I am a king of the Kingdom of Heaven. I am a king of Changelukk. Now, yeah, I don't have the ability to enforce any of that, but in my mind, I want to be free. In my heart, I want to be free. So, I would say, first and foremost, yes, and then, of course, logistically, no.
If I could just follow up with a question.
Is this going to be another question, or is it a part of the first?
Yeah, it'll come, it's connected.
Okay, so it's still your first question?
I know with the whole legalistic, and, yeah, that's, I was happy to hear the spiritual. That was, that's something I could very much connect with. And I definitely understand what you're saying, Dr. Panzer. It's a lot of freedom, and if people misuse it, then, yeah, they're creating their own hell. I totally understand that. That's where the whole freedom of responsibility comes in. I guess that's your free association, right? You don't want to associate with the kind of, you know, people like that. So, to recognize that we're sovereign citizens, even though we don't have land, or we don't have dirt, you could say, can, is this Constitution still active? Again, for me, I already have in my mind what the answer is, but I think it's good for us to get to know what, you know, know each other. Is the Constitution still active, even though, or maybe active in a certain level? Well, in a way of defending, in a way of, like, people's rights are still defended, and not, not being violated, you could say.
The Constitution of the United States of Changelukk is designed and put forward for, as the first paragraph of the preamble says, a future nation. And it gives, if you read it and study it, I think you'll see that it gives a process by which the United States of Changelukk can be established from now. And I'm actually thinking that maybe I need to make a YouTube video on this. But just to give a kind of a brief introduction, if you look at the title, "The United States of Changelukk," "States" is in the plural, and I think that should give a hint. And also, if you look at the way that the Senate is composed, it says that senators are appointed by the, by the upper house, or by the legislature, by the legislature of the several states. So, you have, so, the United States of Changelukk, just as, you know, when the United States of America was formed, there were 13 colonies that existed before the United States of America existed. And these 13 colonies each had their own Constitution. And they came together and created a Constitution for, for a federal Constitution. Now, we're kind of, this, we're kind of doing it backwards. We're kind of getting the cart before the horse. We have that federal Constitution before we have those states, and before each state has its own Constitution. But the federal Constitution presupposes the existence of those states. I think, like I said, it's the United States of Changelukk, so it would seem that you would have to have two separate and independent states that already have some kind of a governing document by which they can have a Senate or a legislature, because you can't have a legislature without a governing document, such as a Constitution. So, today in the United States, each of the 50 states has their own Constitution. Pennsylvania has a Constitution. Delaware has a Constitution. Texas has a Constitution. These are not the same as the United States Constitution, but they are consistent with the United States Constitution. So, they are not in violation of the United States Constitution, because if they were, the United States Supreme Court would tell them to change it, to make it fall in line with it. But they're not the same, and they don't have to be the same. It would be weird if they were the same. So, anyway, so if you ask, do we need, do we need land? Yeah, I think we need land. You know, when God was leading the Israelites, He wanted them to occupy a certain land. My phrase, lines on a map. God wanted certain lines on a map. A line on the map, and I want you in that land. And personally, I think the reason it took them 40 years to get there is because probably on the way, they were thinking, "Ah, we don't have to go all that way." I mean, you know, we have the Ten Commandments, you know? We have a relationship with God, we can just create our nation here. We're already citizens of the Canaan, of Canaan, right? Why do we have to go all the way? What's so great about milk and honey? But God, no, God wanted them to go to that lines on the map. So, I prepared this line on the map, and I want you to be inside it. So, and I think also, we need what I call lines on a map. I think we need, I think we need land, and I don't know how that's going to happen, all right? But I see God's providence moving in certain ways. When I see what's happening in Catalonia, when I see what's happening, you know, in California, you know, I sort of get hope. That things are, it would have been best, you know, if this could have happened, you know, if the Han mother had not done what she did, it would have been best if, you know, maybe Korea, Japan could have adopted this, and/or the United States could have adopted this, and these three countries could have just become the United States of Changelukk, maybe something like that. But that's not the direction that we see that we're going. And maybe during this time of judgment, maybe things will, but somehow, it's, I believe, I believe as a matter of faith, that this is going to manifest itself somehow. But right now, as someone said, "Yeah, we're in training. We're in training for the culture and the civilization that will make Changelukk work." And obviously, you know, the rights that are spelled out in the Changelukk Constitution, we have to be cognizant of those rights, and so forth. So, we need to read the Constitution, study the Constitution, and become people who are, who are able to live in that kind of a kingdom, and manage it as the owners of that kingdom. Because ownership consciousness is going to be a big part of making that kingdom successful. And right now, we've been trained not to have that ownership consciousness. And taking part in elections is perhaps the beginning, maybe becoming involved in the local politics, but also having ownership consciousness in our Sanctuary community is another way that we can be trained towards that kind of a culture.
So, the Constitution, in some level, would you say is still active in the case of citizens of Changelukk were violated, even if we don't have lines on a map?
I don't think—
I totally understand, I totally agree with the lines on a map.
I don't think the Constitution can be said to be active currently. It's on a shelf, all right, to be taken down when we are ready to use it. But we know what's in it, and we are making ourselves, or training ourselves, training our community to become people who can, who are worthy of this Constitution. But if, yes or no question, if the Constitution active, my answer is no.
So, if citizens of Changelukk get violated, then would there still be justice, or no justice?
Yes, there is, there can be, and there should be. There should be justice in all cases. And I think we need, personally, I would like to see a governing document of this, of this community.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I would just respond that, you know, Hyunjin, he actually allowed, in the case of, you know, Jamal felt he had a grievance. Hyunjin did not have to appoint a judge and have a case. He didn't have to do that. And to me, he was using this situation to set a precedent for the future so that, you know, brothers and sisters know that they have a right if they feel they've not had redress of their grievances, that there's a way for people to, you know, to have their grievances dealt with. And I thought it was sad that we didn't actually go through with the court case, because I think, you know, that would have been good education for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Kristin. Oh, I guess you weren't in here before we started, but, yeah, introduce yourself so that—
I'm Kristin Quinn, hi, and I'm from Missouri. Show me state, yes.
Queen Kristin.
My motto, okay? I sent in 14 questions and thought of a few more afterwards. However, I think I'm going to just encapsulate them all. So, bear with me here. And they're about the topic that Gideon brought up, mostly. And I just talked with the King and his brother about these kind of things. And, okay, the Constitution is a gift from God. It's a gift from our King. It's the word of God for the Kingdom of Heaven on Earth, which Father has given us as a mission since the beginning of our, you know, inception in this path. So, I'm very connected to this, because this is our ultimate goal, the Kingdom of Heaven on Earth. We've had debates, some of the people in this, Tim particularly, I think, about the viability of the Constitution, and when is it going to be instituted, and how is it going to be instituted? And I think this is a crucial, crucial issue for our community. We have some different, I think, confusion, or dual purposes, or mixed purposes going on in the structure that exists right now. We have the church structure here in SC, Pennsylvania. I don't connect to that. I'm in Missouri. I have my own structure. Other people have their own structures. I think it's really different. For the people here who have the king versus people like me and all over the world who don't have the king, who don't have access to the king. Therefore, for people like me, it becomes much more imperative to focus on what is the structure that we connect to the king through? Because from far away, it seems like there's no access. It's very much, if you live somewhere else, it's very much like dealing with family fed. I'm encapsulating my questions, my fourteen questions. And I'm also having a dialogue about what concerns me. Okay? Huh, so, um, I appreciate so much your answer to are we citizens of Chunguk? Because you talked about it's a mentality. It's a spiritual, safe, sanctuary place that you either are in or you're not in. The crown means something to you personally, or it doesn't. And you consider yourself citizens of Chunguk, and that's a very real thing to you? Or it is not? I talked with the king and his brother and told him that there is a need, and he understands, there is a need for a different structure than sanctuary church. There is a need for a manifestation of an umbrella organization that, uh, that king is over all churches. The king is over all organizations. That's our constitution. That's needed right now in Missouri, an ability to not have to, um, manipulate a structure through people like we don't know with issues we don't have to connect. And so God has given us that structure, the constitution, for that to happen. And we have to have the mentality to create it. So there's, it's a balanced constitution. It's the IG, it's the king.
IG?
It's the inspector general. It's the king, and it's the citizens. The other reason it's crucial is because the micro informs the macro. What happens around the king providentially happens in the macro. So when we're talking about nuclear war, when we're talking about pedophiles, when we're talking about defeating Satan on the macro, we should look first to the micro. Are we taking care to live according to God's ideals and God's values as owners of Chunguk, as citizens? The citizen part the king can't do. The citizen part the IG can't do. The citizen part is the part we do. There are, I am going to introduce this. The king said, I can. The citizen part is our job to take responsibility for. And so Cookjin and Hyun Jin knows that citizens have gotten together, and we have a citizen covenant for those of us who believe we are citizens of Chunguk, and we are going to make it manifest.
Okay, so Kristen, let me just, uh, I think you're proposing, and you're, you are actually answering, asking a question. So you're, you're saying, there's actually two, there's actually a lot of questions in your statement. But as I understand it, uh, you're saying, if I understand correctly, that, uh, you who live in Missouri or other parts of, of America, um, it's hard for you to relate directly to the king, because you're not here, and that you, so you're wondering how you can relate to the king. Um, I, I, I would say that Hyun Jinam has already given many organizations, um, all over the world. He said to, uh, in Korea, there's the Sanctuary Church of, of Korea, and then there's the Utopia Moon Group. And Hyun Jinam says to both of them, go for it, you know, let's have some heavily competition.
Well, Hyun Jinam said to me today that citizens can register and declare their citizenship.
Okay, okay, then you got your answer then.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the answer is, you, you are free. Kristen, you are free right now, and you are always free, to organize anything you want. And you are free to, you know, form some type of association, as, as you're putting it. You have that freedom right now, and you always did. And, and if you can persuade people to, to work with you in this, uh, new association, then Hyun Jinam is not stopping you. I'm not stopping you. Lourdes, Tim, and, and Greg, none of us are stopping you from doing anything, anything that you want in this area.
And Gideon is gonna be, uh, in charge. He's got these forms.
Uh-huh.
And people can register with Gideon if they want to claim a covenant as a citizen that will be formed to a congress.
I'd like to answer some of-
In a different, in a different, uh, level than this church structure.
I'd like to answer some of Kristen's, Kristen's questions here, because she's not asking a question now, but she did submit fourteen questions. I have them in front of me. And I'd like to answer some of them, since she's not gonna give us an opportunity to answer them on her own. Um, her first question is, how do you justify your supreme council governing structure? And I'd like to answer that. Um, we're not a supreme council. Uh, maybe you were not here when we, when we first began this meeting, but I described how, uh, when, uh, the king began his ministry, he had no staff, and he brought me on as his first member of the staff. The workload got too big for me, so we brought on Greg.
Excuse me, Tim, but I'm not interested.
Let me, let me finish.
I'm not interested in that question.
Well, I'm interested in answering it, because you asked the question right here. So I'm interested in answering. So let me answer it. If you're not interested in asking the question, why'd you ask it? Um, why'd you ask it?
Because, um, the church structure that you're involved in, I really have no longer any interest in. I don't really care. Because what I care about is the constitution and a constitutional structure that the king-
I'm sorry, do you have a question? Do you have a question?
I'm telling you.
Okay, look, look, let-
Are you asking or telling?
Wait, okay, wait, okay, everybody-
I'm telling, I'm telling you.
Then you don't belong here, then you don't belong here.
No, I belong here because my king told me-
This is a meeting for us to ask questions, and for, for you to ask questions and for us to answer.
Okay, actually, I, I-
If the king told you, then you're finished. You got your answer.
Okay, listen, everybody-
You've got a long ways to drive.
Kristen has an association. She wants you to consider joining with her. And after this meeting's over, please talk to Kristen if you're interested. And we, we're not trying to stop you, Kristen. We, we wanna let other people ask a question now as well. There are other people who wanna ask a question. So, but everybody, please talk to Kristen if, if you're interested in what she has to say.
Talk to Gideon, not me. I'm not gonna be here.
Okay, well, I think Gideon will, whoever, whoever, whoever you want. Okay, thank you.
Okay, my name is Luz Franco. Um, I'm a Christian. The day my son one comes, I wanna be first. First of all, I'm gonna try to, like, everybody say, women, we are so emotional, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be not so emotional. Um, when I was in the family fed, always I was calling the outsider, because I was Pentecostal. Then I became a seven-day event in one year. I called the outsider, and I love it. And so members here also coming like that, it's not offending, because I'm Christian, and Jesus is my Savior. Father is the first who loved Christians, uh, Christ that decided to take his mission. And that's why they call me outsider. I prefer to be outside of the matrix. Um, I had two questions. First of all, when, uh, I think that was Greg, they say that spiritually we are, um, citizens of Chunguk. I don't know, I'm very confused, and forgive me, but I found that so hypocrite. Uh, at least Tim Elder was honest, and he said, I don't know. But as a Christian, I can tell you, I'm a, I'm a princess of the king, of the Christians, always we know that when we go to the spirit world, when we go heaven, we had a crown. Someone you, shame on you, I cannot breathe. I cannot wear my crown, because I don't have a king. How many times you can say, where's your crown? Shame on you. Some of you just punch hypocrites. I'm a citizen of Chunguk, okay? You know me, Greg, and some of you know me for many years. I die for what I, what I believe. Okay, some brothers here, you say you follow the king. Three weeks ago, I sit down right there, my pastor, because I call him my pastor, because Jesus is the first pastor. And I told him, I'm ready to walk away from this church, because I don't feel good anymore. After you give the sermon, I go to the kitchen, and you know, Greg, that's the only place that I can find peace in my mind. The pastor told me, Luz, we're gonna buy a land, and we're gonna help the second gen who has been just married in the last month to build the houses. Help me, and I'm gonna help my king. I don't give a shit. Here, believe or not, and that you are a citizen or no, you don't believe in the, and the, we had a country, we had a country. We had to build a country, people. If you don't wanna help, it's okay, you wanna start fighting here. The big church or no church, that you go. Okay? If you wanna stay here, fighting who is right and who's wrong, go ahead. I promise to my king, and he is there over there, he knows, and God is my witness, that I said, stay and I'm gonna help you. Because look at the man over there, that's my son, my seed. And when I have my son, I offer to God and say, God, use him. And he has been faithful, so he's gonna continue the seed and make the prophets, and then I hope all the second gen here who have been married, please, help the king. It's, we are, amen, citizens of Chunguk, Chunguk. I signed a paper, and I'm proud, and somebody here gonna say, get out from the church. Go ahead, push me, take me out, because I came here to die for my Jesus Christ. I'm gonna confess to you, five years ago, when I found my husband cheating on me, I tried to take my life, and that's a sin. So I'm not afraid to die, my brothers, for my Christ, who is my king or king, my life. So I gonna support a king because of that. You guys can do whatever, had a town meeting, do whatever. And the second thing coming is about Lourdes. Many people know. I have issues with her for how long, Lourdes? Twelve years. I love her, don't take me wrong. And you tell me, Lourdes, how many times when we had events, and you are suffocating, I come in, I say, how I can help you? And I'm proud that you repent, I mean, you ask, apologize to Jamal and about the page and all that. But you deny to me in my face that you didn't call me whore, sister. We talk in that room, and I raise my hand, and I say, God in my witness, I approached Tim Elder, I approached Jerry, that he's not here. The first person I complained to was Yonani. And the last person, that was the king. That day that I say I get ready to go. And you deny my face, and sister, I love you, but I take that to my grave and to God, that you say that to me that day in the kitchen. And I forgive you, you know why? Because I wanna see my king. Okay, but you need to really be honest, and you repent, and don't do anymore. That's what Jesus said to the woman that washed his feet. I love everybody, but it's time to do something else. We need to really to start the nation. It's not for future generations, otherwise I'm gonna go back to seven-day adventures, when we say someday when Jesus come, we're gonna have the kingdom of God on, on earth. No, the kingdom, he wanna start in now and Father too. Don't let Father die for nothing, that's it.
Thank you, Luz.
I just wanna say one more thing. I feel really sad that I don't have a voice unless I can ask you a question.
Well, the purpose of this meeting-
That I don't have value unless-
I'd like to raise a point of order with the emcee. I believe she's out of order.
Okay. Yeah, if you have a question, please ask your question. And there's, there's ample time, even if it's through telephone conversation, there's ample time for, for, uh, further communication. This is to be a question-answer, sir.
I have a question for Tim Elder.
Okay.
Why do you think you have authority to censor citizens of Chunguk?
I don't have that authority.
You have the authority in this meeting.
I have the authority to raise a point of order. I have the right to raise, I don't have the authority, I have a right to raise a point of order, because this meeting was called for people to ask questions to the staff. And you're taking up time with your own announcements and your own opinions, and you're not asking a question. You're not contributing to the purpose of this meeting. You're out of order.
Okay, thank you, Tim, for, for bringing clarity. And for everyone else, as we continue on, let's, let's return to the spirit of this meeting. It should be a positive spirit. I know there's been personal issues. Can I make a comment? I asked your permission to make a comment along this line. Okay, I know that people have interpersonal issues. And I think it's wrong if we think that we need to escalate our interpersonal issues with other people to the level of a constitutional violation. If my wife and I have an argument, I'm not gonna invoke the constitution. Okay? If you have an argument with a brother and sister, please deal with that. That's what Hyun Jinam has been saying. Please resolve this between yourselves by your conscience. We can't just give up our own responsibility and throw it on the shoulders of the church and on the constitution and even onto God. We're trying to say, God, your constitution's not so great, because I'm upset at this person. So I've felt this way for a long time. And please, let's reflect. We're here before God, before our Lord Jesus. We've invoked the name of Jesus. We're here also before the saints and sages shed their blood in the providence. We're now participating in that same providence. It's not separate from those that are watching us from the spirit world right now. And let's honor them. Okay, and so let's continue on with our questions. We, go ahead, Lourdes.
I just wanna say a few words about the incident that Luz has brought it up. Um, I wish she was here, I would like to-
She's over there right now.
Oh, hi, Luz.
I wanna ask the emcee, is this really an order? I know Luz made a comment.
I, I, I made those statements hoping to bring back into focus the spirit of asking questions to, and these, these are people that carry a very heavy responsibility in their day, in their performing their duties under, under Hyun Jinam's order and under God's direction of the providence. It's perfect, but let's, uh, let's try to confine this to questions that they can answer. Go ahead, Tim.
Um, I have Kristen's, fourteen questions in front of me. And some of them are very good questions, and I'm, I'm disappointed that, uh, she wasn't bringing them up, um, here today. And I would like to address some of the issues that she raises in these questions without going through all fourteen. Uh, one thing is whether or not the staff is a, is a government. Uh, and I wanted to clarify that we are not a government. Uh, we are the king's staff. Uh, we were, uh, brought on by the king to perform certain, um, jobs and tasks that were within his purview. Uh, and he couldn't do everything by himself, and so he brought on people who have both the time and the job skills and the training by father. Uh, you know, all of us here have been trained by father for decades. And so now, that training that father gave us, it now belongs to the king, and so he is claiming that, uh, to, uh, and bringing us here to, to perform those, uh, activities. A government is, is, as what George Washington said, a government is, is force. Uh, but in this church, everything is done voluntarily. Uh, you aren't, no one is here because you were forced to be here. Um, people who donate are not forced to donate. Uh, people who, uh, help us with our various, um, activities and, and events are not forced to do so. Uh, so there is no government here. Uh, so it is a, it is a voluntary organization, and so it is not a, this is not a government. And I think it creates a confusion when, um, people try to adopt that model for, um, looking at the, uh, looking at the, looking at the staff and, and what we do. And, uh, she refers to, um, uh, she says here, what are citizens to do with judges who place unconstitutional gag orders on people? gag orders on people in a national reason and treat non-citizens the same as citizens?" Some of this, I don't understand what she means by "non-citizens" and "citizens," but I argued very strongly against the King appointing a judge under the Constitution of the United States of Chongguo, because it would be a violation of the Constitution. According to the Constitution of the United States of Chongguo, the King cannot appoint a judge. For example, the Supreme Court, he can nominate, or he can appoint, but that appointment has to be confirmed by a Senate, and since we don't have a Senate, under the United States of Chongguo Constitution, the King does not have the power to appoint a judge, and I did not want to see the King violating the Constitution before it even came into — before the country even came into existence. Now, he appointed a judge, but this was aside from the Constitution of the United States of Chongguo. So once you put that Constitution aside, he can do anything he wants, because he is the — he is Father's inheritor and a representative body, and he wanted some system to be — some venue to be made available, so that certain people could have justice served. And so he appointed a judge outside that Constitution. And so, to say that it was an unconstitutional gag order, in my opinion, would be an incorrect characterization. For one thing, you cannot really say that something is unconstitutional, because only the Supreme Court can decide whether something is constitutional or not. And since we don't have a Supreme Court, we really cannot argue about whether something is constitutional or not. These arguments will be made by a — before a Supreme Court, at some future date, when that court actually exists. She asks, "What are your salaries, and who decided what you are to be paid?" Only the King has the authority to release that information, and, well, the King decided what we were to be paid. And she also asks for a breakdown of some of the items in the financial statements, and I think that's a good question, and I hope that she can address that to Greg, and perhaps, maybe, if she's interested, still interested, then she can get answers from Greg. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think anybody that wants details of the financial statements, which are put online at our sanctuary/pa.org site, if anybody has concerns on how money is being spent, you can send an email to me, and I'll give you, you know, work with Susan Runhofer in getting a detailed report sent to you on how expenses are spent. Basically, the King has total on all expenditures at Sanctuary. There's not one expense, really, that is made, you know, of significance, that doesn't have the King's approval. And if somebody has a financial or has a proposal, they come to me usually with a proposal, and then I talk to them, kind of clarify the proposal, so it's clear in my mind, and then I bring it up to the King at our international meetings usually, and then if he gets — if there's a basic approval there, then I bring it to the Financial Committee. Once the Financial Committee approves, then it's brought back to the King for his signature. So it's a very systematic way, but the King has veto rights, he has nothing of significant expenses done without his absolute understanding and blessing, and that's something that that's the way it was set up from the very beginning. So if anybody has a proposal that they would like to implement, then, you know, usually we, you know, a proposal is drawn up, and then we try to get multiple quotes on things, whether it's building improvements, or some kind of education thing related to what Carrier Richard is doing, then, you know, we try to find out the best economic plan, and then we present it to the King for his initial approval, then it's brought to the Financial Committee, and then brought back to the King for a signature.
Okay. There were a couple of others on — questions on there. Tim, did you wanna comment further? If not, there were other submitted questions, which I would like to answer, because there's been people outside the area that —
Well, I guess I am kind of cherry picking. I skipped this one. Why did Tim mock the citizens in the Constitution? You know, I published a post on Facebook, and I guess that's what — I guess this is what it's referring to. Mockery sometimes is an ineffective tool, you know, if someone is under some delusion or something, I think a kind of — sometimes mockery can help them wake up. But I don't think I mocked the Constitution. I would argue that I did not.
Okay.
I think Tammy had a question also.
Oh, yes, and also Louis does have another question, too. Maybe, could we finish up the ones that are submitted from offsite? Kevin Brugman had a couple, and I see one from Ivan Jenner. Or do you wanna go back to —
I think we should give priority to people who are —
Sure, who are here.
— who didn't have a chance to ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Tammy.
Okay.
Tammy, I'm Brian. I have a question about the tenet of ostracization. I'm not sure what it's called in the — I think the Amish have a thing where if you are not following the rules, they'll all basically cut you out, and you can't be part of their society. And the King has mentioned, on two different occasions during service, that we have to find a way to keep people out of Chongguo that are the undesirables. The people, although it's an individual thing, an individual can cause a great deal of harm if they posse up several people to unite with them on targeting certain individuals. So we need to have some kind of policy, because if that happens, the church, one by one, can be picked off very easily. And that's my question.
I mean, I'd like to respond. I mean, I haven't really thought about this issue, but, look, in my opinion, we're trying to grow the Kingdom of God, and we believe that we have the precious words of the Lord the Second Advent, and we have the precious words of His Son. So rather than thinking about excluding people, and judging people, and thinking about — I mean, to me, this is something that I do not agree with. Now, if someone is truly multiplying anger, resentment, and hatred, then they definitely should be talked to, but I don't agree with — I mean, I actually wrote something and put it on Facebook, and I don't even like to do that on certain topics about this very issue, because, look, by definition, the Kingdom of God should be — I think it has something to do with love, love, right? Jesus said, "Love God and love your neighbor." I think that's what it's about, correct me if I'm wrong. So, in my view, ostracism is not — to me, that is at the bottom of the list. That's at the bottom of the list, and if there's a brother or sister who's causing you a problem, talk to that person, and tell them, "You're being a jerk," or whatever you wanna say to them. But, you know, I — to me, there's a spirit of judgmental — there's a judgmental spirit, which I think is not from God, okay? And I do not agree with it, and I think it's really — and I think Hyung-jun, I — without going into details, I can assure you that Hyung-jun has spoken to several people about this issue, and has tried to help certain people to approach their discipleship. I believe we're disciples, right? We're meant to be disciples, right? And so I — to me, this is wrong. We shouldn't be excluding and ostracizing each other, unless there's a very extreme case, but Jesus said very clearly, actually, I believe it's in the Book of Ephesians. Bill, is that true? Where Jesus says, "If you have a problem with your brother," or it would be Saint Paul, I'm sorry, Saint Paul, okay, where he says, "Go talk to your brother and complain, you know, make a complaint face to face. If that doesn't work, get two or three witnesses, and go back and try to resolve the issue. If that doesn't work, go to the whole church community, and if that doesn't work, and this person is still causing harm, in the opinion of the whole community, then you can talk about, you know, ostracism. It's the last resort." But I don't think — I don't think — I don't know if anyone's robbed a bank lately, or, you know, I don't know of any major offense.
Go ahead, Tim.
In terms of the United States of Chongguo, the Constitution does have a provision that gives Congress the power to establish a uniform rule of naturalization. For example, in the United States of America, there was a time when, on your visa application, you were asked whether you were a communist, and that was a grounds, I think, for a possible exclusion from the country. You were not allowed to enter the country, you were not allowed to become a citizen if you were a communist, I believe. So that kind of a thing, for example, maybe, you know, certain pedophiles or something like that, people have been convicted of sexual crimes, for example. If the Congress chooses, it can pass a law, but that's not — that details not in the Constitution, but it gives the power to pass that kind of law. In terms of the church, my understanding is that there are only one group of people who are excluded. That is, the people who participated in the conference or the meeting in the hospital in August 2012, where it was discussed whether or not to turn off a father's life support system, and those people who either said, "Yes, let's turn it off," or those people who remained quiet while the other people were advocating a turning off the system. Those people, if they come here, they have — well, okay, one person has, but before I arrived here, but if they come here, then I will ask the King whether they can be admitted to the church. Other than that, anyone who comes to the church with the purpose to praise and worship God, I'm not going to turn away, and I would — if someone else tries to turn them away, I would argue against it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got now three people in the queue. I'll go in order of the ones that notified me they wanna speak. Louis next, and then Mihoe, then Bill, and I think Robert also had a —
You can ask Kevin's question.
I'm sorry?
You can ask Kevin's question.
Yeah, we'll work that in. I will, we'll get it. Thank you, Louis. Very quickly, in light of the fact, this is a town hall meeting, a lot of things have been brought up, but I think everybody's done pretty good, all things considered. I have a practical question. I have three very eligible men at home, sons, that need to be blessed. What plans does the Sanctuary Church have to expand on that?
Okay, so, okay, I have very mixed feelings about this topic. Okay, so let me — there's actually several answers to this. Number one, if your son would like to be considered by other Sanctuary families for possible matching, they should post their profile on sanctuaryblesslife.org, okay? They should do that. Then other people around the country and around the world will know that they are eligible.
That's great.
Okay, so they definitely should do that, right? Okay. Then, secondly, Dorrit Smith has organized workshops for people interested in matching and blessing, and it would be a good idea for them to come to that, and then they can be educated more about the practice, and strategies, and philosophy of matching and blessing, the meaning of the blessing, this kind of thing, and they can meet other people who are also interested. That's the second thing. I'm actually open to more suggestions. I mean, I have to say that every Thursday, we hear reports from Korea and Japan, and I always feel — I feel jut — Mrs. Erikawa, because she is — she's like a prizefighter, and she's doing so many things in this area. You know, she's matching people, and she's having conferences, and people are coming, the parents come, and they introduce their children, and have photos of their children, and — like a slacker compared to her, but we do have, you know, these bi-annual, twice a year, you know, these workshops. So that's my answer.
Just to give you an idea of what Mrs. Erikawa is doing, she recently had meetings of parents who want their children to receive the blessing, who have children that they want to be blessed. And this was held in three different locations around Japan, and in these meetings, the parents would come, and they would bring their children's [inaudible], and then each parent would get up and introduce their child, and then after that, they would break up, you know, into pairs of people who are interested in each other's child. And, you know, some pairs or couples are born from that, are arranged by that. So it's the parents who are in the — who are in the driver's seat in this. So Mrs. Erikawa is providing the venue where this kind of thing can happen, and if people want that kind of thing to happen here, I'm sure that someone sitting two seats to my left would be happy to arrange it. Two seats to my left. So that's one thing she's doing, and also, she has a number of one-day seminars. She will go around the country, I don't know how many she's done, quite a few, one-day seminars, where in the morning, she will get a lecture, usually a lecture from that area where she is, or someone who can be there, to give a brief Divine Principle lecture, just maybe three hours, like that, cover the whole thing. And then in the afternoon, she will give a talk on the meaning and significance of the blessing. And then, these are given to blessing candidates, so the candidates themselves, not — all the parents also attend these, but the focus is on the candidate. And people are educated about the blessing through those kinds of events, and eventually maybe couples are created out of that. But of course, Mrs. Erikawa has a very strong track record. You know, if you submit a name to Erikawa, if you submit information to Erikawa and says, "Please find a match for this person," in a couple of weeks, she will come back to you.
Better than Yenta, huh?
She is a real matchmaker. She is — maybe some of your — a couple of your sons, I don't know, talk to her the next time she's here. Yeah?
That's a good question, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a couple more, and just a reminder, let's keep it to questions, not commentary on past situations that have happened, but, yeah, so for the remainder, let's keep in the spirit of Q and A. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mihoe.
My name is Mihoe Panza. Okay, I'd just like to say, and one question to Lourdes, how much we appreciate for them. They put their life to support King and Queen. They work so hard, day and night, and then they put their life to really work hard for church, all right? Just, please understand how much they really put effort with their life to be here, okay? All right, then I have a question to Lourdes. Are you going to say sorry to Jamal, front of, you know, front of all brothers and sisters?
She already did that, right?
Yeah, I think you were not here at the beginning of the meeting. She —
She did that today.
She gave a heartfelt apology.
She did that today.
Yeah, not here. As I know, many brothers and sisters heard from Lourdes and then Jamal's point. Some people lost power to be in the church, and then some people really struggled from their arguing. So I'm so happy to say the sorry, and then, no, but it's not only here problem. The world has a lot to know, this kind of wonderful, you know, repentance front of brothers and sisters, because I know, even in America, many leaders of brothers and sisters are concerning about it. And then, also, I know more, after this issue, do not bring any problem between you and Jamal to the world, okay? I'm sorry, it's very, very important for kids, for students, all right? Okay, just wanna make sure, do not go up-down like this. If you say sorry, this is the last words, to not fight anymore, okay? Please. That's I wanna try to ask you, and we love you. Really thankful to you, too, all right? But many brothers and sisters has a painful heart, more than, maybe more than you sometimes. I cried, me too, I cried. Once Kings start to talk about this issue, oh my, I couldn't stop tears, because how much — King is the — much Kings worry about you guys, and worry about, you know, church too. So we want to make beautiful church together. Also, one more thing, I'm sorry. This place is headquarters for the world. Each event, many brothers and sisters come from all over the world. Let's welcome them, you know, with sincere heart, and welcome them to be here, you know, as a headquarters, as a King, Queen together. Please, we can grow up a little more, not judging each other. We can make beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, Mihal. Bill?
Okay, was there a question?
Actually, there was.
Okay, Lordess, do you want to...
Yes, yes, I...
That's the answer.
The question was, is Lordess going to refer the apology to the whole world?
Well, it's on tape, so, this is on tape.
I asked the King last Sunday, and he didn't call on me, so, yeah.
My name is Bill Bruinhofer, and my question is about this wonderful community, which I view in Chonokuk Providence as a free association of Stige and Sisters. And I agree with what Greg said, is the Chonokuk Constitution and citizenship and sovereignty are the ideals that we uphold, that we aspire to, and that we take up pieces of those and we try to embody those and bring those and incorporate those into our life, so that we can build that community, which creates the state and then the nation. It's a building block. We're here building that block, right here. My question is about the, kind of, there's a, there's a kind of a dichotomy between, like staff, we have paid staff and we have volunteer staff, and those, those who are contributing so much to this community. And it seems like, I don't know why we have a, why we think about them in different ways, because they represent this community in a public way. So any, whether you're paid or you're unpaid staff, whether you're a paid contributor, unpaid contributor, we're all part of being the public face of contribution to this community. Lowell and I have the wonderful blessing to be able to coordinate Bible study, and announcements are made, and so forth, and statements made, and then we, we conduct that study here on the premises. So in my view, well, we're public people, we're part of the face of this community, and therefore, I agree with Tim, that having some sort of governing document is needed to represent, even as Robert said, the mission statement, et cetera. But also that within that, there might even be associations freely meet based on common ground and common agreement. And therefore, something like a code of conduct is a reflection of the values in terms of treatment of one another and ethics that we substantiate in word, and then we seek to embody that word in our relationship for public figures. And so what is your view on this idea of the, who is a public face of this community? And is it only, only paid staff? Is it volunteers? And why is there, is there a difference? And if there is, why is there a difference in terms of treatment?
Okay, I'd like to respond to this. I have to say that Bill's making a very important point. Anyone called to service, anybody, whether the person is paid or not, is serving the King, the Second King of Chonokuk, period, period, okay? So, yeah, so it is true that, for whatever reason, Hyunjin asked the four of us to work full-time, I guess you could say, but that doesn't mean that it, he chose to do that for his own reasons, okay? You can ask him why he chose, maybe, you can say, boy, that guy Richard, you made a big mistake, you know, you could say, tell that to him, but, but, you know, everyone here is, we're all called to public service. All of us are, all of us are in position, and, I mean, to be honest, I, I told Jamal, I told Jamal, Jamal, you are, you know, the term archangel, okay, God had Adam and Eve, and there were three archangels, okay? So one of the archangels was a pedophile, okay? I'm sorry, happened, but the two other archangels, Michael and Gabriel, as far as we know, they were loyal, faithful servants of God and Adam and Eve, okay? So the term archangel should not be a curse word, it shouldn't be, oh, you're a blanking, blank, 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 archangel. That is totally wrong. And all of us, and I told, I told Jamal, you know, you're in the position of youth pastor, you have a very important position, that the King trusts you to guide our young people, and you're actually a quote, "archangel," okay? So to me, these labels that people put on each other, to me, they're not very, they shed more darkness than light, in my opinion. And so, now, that said, if anybody has, you know, concern or grievance against somebody here, up here, or anybody, you know, Jamal or any other person who's doing public service, then you have a right to talk to them and ask them why they're doing what they're doing. But, I mean, to me, I, I mean, I agree with you, the premise of your question, Mihal, yes.
I think it would be good to have, you know, I think we're a little bit lacking in the, like, the HR division of sanctuary, you know, where, you know, a code of conduct is probably a good thing, because, again, we are here through free association, and if somebody doesn't want to abide by basic code of conduct standards that sanctuary puts out, then they can make their own association somewhere else. But I personally think it would be good to have a fundamental Christian code of conduct, that we treat each other with respect, and we honor each other, and that if we have disagreements, we don't put it out online to the world to see. We first like the biblical principle of going face to face, and then with three witnesses. I think that's the Christian principles and ethics that we should be abiding by and that, as, at the King's Church. And we can put forth those code of ethics and present them to the King to see if there's agreement there. And then anybody who wants to live outside of that code of conduct, they're certainly free to form their own organizations and associations and churches, that they, that they want to create their own code of conduct. But I think as a Christian church representing the King, I think it's very important we have a code of conduct, that we aren't just free to defile others, or harass others, or to publicly complain about others. That's very un-Christian, actually, and it's, it really does hurt our overall mission of attracting good Christians to the Lord of the Second Advent. I think we're doing a great disservice to Father, and I don't see the King behaving in such a way. I see nothing but appreciation and love coming from the King toward the first responders of the Second King, of the Three Kingship Providence. And I think if we're really serious about living a life that's in attendance to the Three Kingships, we should be paying attention how they behave, how they treat others. And anything different than that, I think you're, we're doing a disservice to the King.
I think we, all of us should do our best to avoid the language of hatred and resentment.
Well, I think we need to move a lot, Lordess?
Just a brief comment. I actually welcome everyone's feedback, as far as Jamal or others that wants to tell me where I should change. I mean, there's a lot of things that I need to learn to do this job well. I welcome that. I wanted to please, I can give you my cell phone number, but in reality, it's really harmful if you go online in front of thousands of people, you know, innocent people, and you start, I mean, saying horrendous things about other people. You know, that is something I, you know, it's really harmful, it's really harmful.
Now, I think what Mihal was asking was that you not respond to that kind of a thing on...
Oh, I don't.
Because it takes two to fight, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Let's see, that's what my mother taught me.
Oh, show me where I answered, please. I haven't...
Okay, as we continue on, I got to ask the panel a housekeeping question, because originally, we're planning on going until five. We do have Kyle, Roseanne, and...
I think we should stay here a little bit longer, so that everyone can ask their question.
Okay.
And people can leave if they, oh, then, but I would like to let everyone ask their question.
Yeah, I think where we're standing now is Kyle, then Roseanne, then who else is on cue?
Janine.
Oh, Janine and Robert. Looks like that's what we've got right now.
I'm Kyle Toffey, and I'm part of this community here. I have a question, and that is, are there any plans on taking the Sanctuary Movement on a roadshow in the United States? Actually, I find it so amazing that Richard Panzer is so versed in talking to people about what we are doing and so forth. We do have these communities that are maybe in Missouri, or LA, or San Francisco, they're not solid at all. But having a representative come from our community here on an invitational basis might be very effective in kind of solidifying people's understanding of who we are, what we're trying to do, and what we're trying to accomplish. And I nominate Richard Panzer.
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. Okay. It reminds me of the General Sherman, if nominated, I will not serve, but anyway. But anyway.
That's your job.
Okay, yeah, but actually, I, I actually have traveled by invitation to North Carolina and to Massachusetts, the community, actually, Massachusetts invited me twice, and I went there twice. So if there is an, a community that wants to invite me, I'm going to go there. I, I'm not, I don't charge anything, but I usually ask them to cover the travel expense. Then that's basically it. And if they can put a space on their, on their floor where I can, I can sleep, that's good enough for me. I don't need to have anything fancy. So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm happy to go, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Roseanne.
And just one more thing I want to say, for those of you, hopefully all of you know, but every Monday, we have a Zoom meeting at nine o'clock Eastern Time, every single Monday night, and you're welcome to join. And you hear what other people doing around the country, and sometimes from other countries as well, but mostly in the United States and Canada, and you're welcome to join. And if you've not been receiving invitations and you want to, then let me know.
Hi, I am Roseanne Cameron. First of all, I just want to thank you guys for this meeting. I think it's been very, very helpful. I think we had a need for that. I think also was good, we, I think we covered so much. And my next question, my question is actually, how often could we do this? Shall we meet a certain, every two months? Or shall we call a meeting when we feel that we're starting to build up a lot of questions? Do we have a plan for that?
Good question.
I think, I think, I think maybe, I was thinking that maybe quarterly might be good.
I actually think that we should be the ones asking you that question.
Okay.
All right, so if you ask, I will take your answer, and I agree with, I think with Greg. I think we need to have at least once every three or four months. I think would be great. Because as we grow, I think we will have different needs, and different questions, and different things we don't need anymore, so. But I just want to bring it out, also, one thing is, like, I agree, gratitude to all of us. Some people carry a very big load, representing all of us, but I think we are all here, body of Christ, and we are all very important, you know?
That's right.
Without a head, the foot doesn't know where to go, but without a feet, the head doesn't move anywhere either. So I think we really are precious to each other, to Hyunjin and Yenonim. You know, I think we, we have differences, but I think our qualities are much stronger than our differences. And I think we have an amazing, amazing group of people here. And I believe that we're not many, but I really believe that one person we see God represents 400 without it. So we have quite a bunch of people here. And I think we are all amazing people.
Thank you.
You know, with our Bible studies, with the things that we offer online, with our university, we've been really transformed, for a better, you know? Speaking to ourselves, I mean, we can tell the deep difference that we are now, since we beginning. We are totally wandering land, no idea, you know? Trying to figure it out, but now this is a real safe ground. And I think we have so much to offer, so really, let's, speaking for myself, I've been praying what God really wants me to offer, you know? So we can share, we can build this an amazing community. I think we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Roseanne, very much. Janine, do you want, oh, Robert? Robert, okay, you guys bite it out. Ladies first, very good.
Okay, this is a question that came to mind because of what happened in the, some of the interactions here. So the question is, I sent it to Tim, and it is that considering that Kristin Quinn came all the way from Missouri to share her opinion and questions, and she got up here, which is not always easy, because we're not always all public speakers, and I can testify to that. And I feel like she was actually mistreated by you, Tim. She was cut short in a very, in a way that I would consider almost abusive. Anyway, that may be not your opinion, but, and you're not the moderator, we have a moderator here. So she wanted to say the questions her way, and you, you cut in and said, oh, look at this, look at this, and then you said, oh, you can, the door, or something, and somebody else seconded.
I'd like to answer.
Okay, so why, what gives you the authority to do that?
I can answer that. Kristin was, was not asking a question, she was making a statement. She came in and said that she had presented a document, and received the King's approval on that document, and so she was telling us about that document. And, but this, this meeting was not prepared for that purpose, and she was taking up, many people here have questions, and we're going overtime now, and she was taking up time that other people could use to ask questions. So in that sense, I felt that she was out of order. And it is my right to, and I did raise it with the MC, that, that a point of order, and I think that I was correct in doing that. Also, so I tried to answer some of the questions that she had sent in my email, which I had in front of me, but then she said that she was not interested in those, in those answers. So what was she doing here, then? She was promoting or publicizing some kind of a document, but that could be done in a, in a separate venue, and that's not the purpose of this meeting. So I did, I did speak forcefully, but I felt that it was necessary to maintain the integrity of this meeting.
You were telling her to kind of get out, almost.
Well, yeah, I was telling her that if she's, because she said she's not interested in, I did say, you don't belong here, and what I meant by belong here was in this meeting, because this meeting has a certain purpose, and she was not willing to conform to that purpose, then I felt that, yeah, if she's not going to conform to the purpose, then what is she doing here?
All of you have taken time on different things, not only the questions, all of you, not only Kristin.
But I think everyone who, other than Kristin, who has spoken, has contributed to the purpose of the meeting. I believe that she was an exception.
I think she was bringing up something important, and something she talked to the King about, so I think it was important.
Yes, okay, and there are other...
We didn't hear, hear the rest of it.
There are other places where she can do that, yeah. That was my opinion, that was why I spoke in that way.
All right, okay.
Okay, maybe I could add just a, just a little bit, and as a moderator, we, everyone knows that there are very strong persons and people rightfully have strong emotion. This is not really the place to promote your position, or, you know, to set up, not a debate, debate's not the right word, but more like a contentious relationship, or to maybe venting off, venting off, blowing... off, venting off, blowing, seem maybe in a way is a valuable thing, but I think that as this was, this Q and A was set up, that this is taken into consideration, and just, I think we want to keep it to questions and answers, because, yeah, and again, not, I'm not saying that in criticism, Kristin, don't misunderstand me, I know there's, especially in your case, you have very few opportunities to come here and speak to the King, or speak to any of the, you know, the people on staff. And I respect and I honor your emotion, because you're a dedicated and passionate person. So if you think you're seeing injustice, you normally want to respond to that, and nobody's, nobody's, I don't think anybody's downplaying that, or especially criticizing that. That's, that's a human, and especially as a queen, that's a queenly emotion, and so I hope that even though maybe, maybe this hasn't worked out to the full extent of everybody's hope and expectation, let's embrace the good progress that has been made, because I feel that there has been a lot of progress made today. Yep.
Kristin, do you actually have a question, just a little, no, I'd like to ask, no? Because I was waiting for that question.
Sorry, you're gonna have to come back. We all want to hear you, so, no, you're good?
Robert has a question, I think.
Okay, and is there any others? Are we going to wrap with Robert's?
And then go to the remote?
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Robert, you can go. No, if you have a short question, I tend to, I have like three, so I need to be very sure.
Since I heard we may have a meeting for three months, it would be good to, for each one to do a report on one aspect of our activities, because reporting is very important. So if we take one, you can't report on everything, but if one area is the World Mission Department, or education, or facility, whatever, use the opportunity to do a small report, so we can bring up the stuff.
So good, good, good comment. Thank you.
Robert? Yeah, and to the moderator coordinator, after me, we're going to go to remote questions, correct? Or at least a few of them. I know Kevin Brugman.
Yeah, we have two questions by Kevin, yeah.
There are a few. Could I, could I exercise just my own judgment? I've read his questions a few times. I think they've been pretty solidly answered already. We can bring, I'll let that up to the panel, because you guys are also familiar with the questions, they're on the sheet here. We can certainly do it if you want to verbalize directly.
I'll give a very fast version, yeah, I'll respond quickly.
Sure, okay. Okay, thank you. One of the, one of the three parts about this meeting was questions and answers, the roles of the staff, financial, and then the one was conflict resolution inside the community. And my questions are going to pertain to that. First off, I'm just going to give an open floor, any of the four staff here in front at the table willing to state anything about conflict resolution inside the community, since it wasn't formally stated, a process or something.
Yeah, we do have a process, although it's very, it's infancy stage. We have had a grievance session, I would say even your situation with, you know, ongoing dialogue, but I think it needs to be worked on. I would like to see somebody in the community that takes up that role as a moderator, or a grievance person, other than somebody that's on the staff. I think it would be better if that was a volunteer position, somebody that could hear out both sides, and be able to bring reconciliation. So that's something that I'm interested in, in developing, a place where people can, and it's a safe, a safe environment for people to express their conflicts if they can't resolve it personally. So it's something that I think needs to be worked on.
Okay, thank you. Then this is the second question, I have to give a little premise to it. But often, when the Second King himself spoke many times in services, he would mention Jamal and Lourdes's conflict and situation, and often there was a third name floating around, mine. And as such, yes, I've been deeply involved in it, in that. The thing is, is if, with the permission of the panel, I'm, I would like to take three minutes to give my perspective on the Jamal-Lourdes court case, what it has concluded to at this point, if that's permissible, with your permission.
I don't mind, don't go more than three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes is what I'm saying. Okay, thank you. I think it is obvious that Lourdes and I do not gel together personally. That's not news to anybody. But beyond that, many people have had friction with her. In the course of that, a group of people gathered to how to try and bring a resolution. It was not about bringing Lourdes down, even though there's many strong feelings and opinions. The conclusion of that group was, she is God's daughter, she works and serves for the King, she works very hard for the King, directly. But there are things that she does to her brothers and sisters habitually, that are very painful and very difficult. And everything that we have tried, and myself personally even, face-to-face meetings, meetings with witnesses, and other people there to go through it, and they're very painful and time-consuming, have come to naught. In other words, the painful things that Lourdes habitually did, she continued to do. And at Witsin, that's where, when looking at it, and with a lot of prayer and discussion, the idea was, how do we deal with this? And the concept came very clearly, it's through God's Word. And what is God's Word for us in this time and situation? We said, well, when the Israelites came out of Canaan, they went to Sinai, God gave the Ten Commandments. Obviously, they didn't have a nation, but God gave His Word. So we took that on faith and said, let's look at God's Word and the Constitution. Without getting into all the details, that's why there was the filing under the Constitution. Now, it's a miracle that the King gave us a court to be guided by the principles of Chanyil Gook. No one's denying that we don't have sovereignty, or anything like that. But God has clearly expressed that His ideal is to be framed by His Constitution, and we want to embody those principles, and we want to use them, even in difficult situations between cousins and sisters. Also, the other thing was, and this was very clear, and I want to say this directly to you, Lourdes, I know from a long time, you've said, I've wanted to kick you out, I've wanted to remove you, or I wanted your job. Those are all false impressions. Actually, among the group, almost everyone wanted you gone. They wanted to see you gone. And I'm talking about the group that was having this meeting, Doug, and that. Okay? I was the only one that said, no, you cannot ask for her to be gone. Even though I have difficulty with you, Lourdes, the King put you there. I have stood up for you every time someone has asked for you to be gone. I want you to know that. I've even in front of the King and his brothers stood up for you and say, they put you there, no one has any right to ask for you to be gone. You know? Also, because of that, the only thing we could ask of you is that you repent, and apologize, and cease doing this again. Those were the requests for relief under the filing. The sad point from my perspective is, is the King formed the court, all the difficulties going to get it, go through, everything. And at the end, Jamal withdrew. So what happens is, the process never went forward, and we are where we are. I'm sorry about that. I wish it had gone forward personally. Okay? So that's my statement, I'm sorry, maybe four minutes, Richard, four or five.
Actually, six minutes, but it's okay.
All right, thank you, I indulge you. That's all. Now, I just have two final questions, and this is for Lourdes. No, very, very short, very, very short questions. Lourdes, I have invested in trying to resolve with you. If I put the time forward, are you willing to honestly sit down with me?
Yes.
And work to resolve the situation between us?
Yes.
Thank you. The second question is, and this too, the internet, everything else, I have to deal with people online that you send messages to, and that you gin up, and you feed them information, that they come at me. I just sincerely ask, can, people talk about Jamal shooting on the inside, can you please stop shooting at the two of us? And I will work with you to resolve this. Okay? That's my pledge to you, as my sister. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Robert. By the way, I just want you to know that you're not the only one who's had Lourdes delete your comments. She deleted my comments, and I was supposed to be your president, and you delete my comments too.
I'm a cleaner.
Okay, thank you very much, Robert, very heartfelt, and we're really glad for your clarification on many, many of the things that you said. Thank you. Yes, alpha male. Give him a hand. I see one more hand, can we extend a little longer? Louis, we'd like to hear from you, sure.
Okay, because I lost myself before, but the question is directly to Lourdes, because she was already to say something, and you say, no. Me too, and we like to sit down, like, again, everybody always hear Jamal and Lourdes, hey, what about me? I know her more than, and more issues. So I want to sit down, talk to her, because I do, like, again, I'm a Christian, I approached her a long time ago, nothing, I bring witness, this and this and that, and I would like also to close that page. I need to move on also. But please, because, excuse me, I think somebody interrupted you, when Mijo says to you something, and you say, oh, my job. Please, sister, your job is wonderful. You have been helped the King a lot. I can't, even people say here, oh, you are multitask, I can't, I will not be able to do the job you do, you do. You do a great job, let me tell you, nobody impress me in that area so easy. But the most important thing, sister, your spiritual life. I want to see you in heaven too, you know? We want to see you in heaven, so please don't get distracted for your job, to try to grow in spiritually. And don't use neither the power, or the, how you can say, the trust from the King sometimes, like, because say, you have been heard, people in private messengers in Texas, that they even send it to me, when things, when you use the King. And please, you know how Masala, that man, you know, because he's father's son. So don't use him, please, I'm begging you. Starting today, I want you to separate the two things, your job and your personal spiritual life. And when you want people to do something, say, I'm Lourdes who said that, but please don't use him anymore, please, I'm begging you, okay? And I love you, okay? You know that.
Okay.
I just want to say, thank you, Louis, that's a great advice, I appreciate it. I think some of the things we do sometimes, when you're tremendous, in my case, anyway, it's very stressful to work with managing many people, it's not what I like to do. I really don't, haven't brought him here, knowing that was, yeah, my job, but this isn't not an excuse, I have personality issues, I have language, you know, one of the things that I, I only love my brother Bill, is that he says, you know, in communications, there's always, it's very important, if you don't understand what that person meant, that you ask the question, please, what did you mean by that? You know, and often, what I see, that I believe, and I hope, and I pray, that will never again, is that instead of asking me, you go online and say, you know, they say actually that you were a bitch, or whatever, you know, some really extreme terminology is being used. And I think as a, as a, the King is promoting this JC culture, that we have to be very conscientious, and I appreciate your work, so hard every time, helping Mijo, and you help us, like, we don't even ask you, you know, you are there in the kitchen, hours and hours and hours and hours and hours, we just cannot imagine the kind of sacrifice everyone makes here, just to make the event work. You know, so I really sincerely apologize to you, if I did that to you, that's completely unfair on my part, and I hope that we begin again with the new, you know, this is a new day for us. I'm not perfect, I like the King made very clear, we have many issues that we have to resolve. In my case, you just double it, okay? I have many more issues. I'm alone, my husband is away, it's very painful, and all of that, but anyway, bottom line is, we need to, to work from here on, looking forward, like, with Kristin and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Louis. Hey, if I could just, just a few words to honor Louis. When we were preparing the palace before the King moved in, she worked tirelessly, days, preparing you, every time you walked across that wood floor, she went over every inch of that floor, putting a new finish on it, as well as cleaning that place top to bottom. She's really a trooper.
Yes.
Wonderful sister, thank you, Louis, very much.
Thank you, Louis.
Everybody, those things happen, people don't see, but I testify to her. I saw one more hand, and it's Lisa, so I better not ignore her.
I'd like a suggestion. For those of us who are old fogies in the movement, we used to do things when we were young in the church, and that was when we didn't get along with somebody, the first thing we did was serve them. Even if it means getting a plate of their lunch before you got your own, put it down, and you worked without recognition. I suggest that might be a good way to start, to break down the barriers of our hearts the way we did when we were young. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I read the questions?
Oh, please, yes. Okay, Kevin Brugman sent questions. First, why has not Lourdes's behavior been addressed? I think we've been talking, mostly, I'm a little jealous, my, she's getting all the, sucking all the attention here.
They want me to make me perfect.
I think we've been talking, we have been addressing this issue, and I think Lourdes has expressed her willingness to meet with people and to work it out. And I have to say, I said this before, but I'll say it again, I've had many disagreements with Lourdes, and I've told her, in very strong terms, I think, that we're that we're still, but, you know, I don't assume just because I don't write about it on Facebook that it's not happening. I think Facebook is probably the last place that I want to go.
That's right.
Sorry. Okay, second question, what is the long-term goal of Sanctuary Church? That's a huge question, I think we've had some discussion about that issue.
Kingdom of Heaven.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, we could spend like two hours, ten hours, defining what that term means, but I think we'll probably leave that for the next town hall, okay?
I think the goal of Sanctuary Church is being defined as Father dictates to the Second King. That's the way I see, that's the way I see things, is that the King is being guided, and even the King doesn't know exactly how the providence is going to unfold. And he is, in prayer, he's setting conditions, and he does what he does so that he can receive guidance from Heaven as to how sanctuary should develop. I mean, this is not an easy, to be, you know, the Second King leading the providence of God is not an easy task, and I think we should owe some appreciation to the King.
That's right.
You know, he's, you know, he is really in a position to be obedient to Heaven. And it's through these conditions that he sets, through bushcrafting, and training with the Peace Ninjas, and to really being humble to the Word of God, and doing three hours of the God's Report every morning, really pouring out his blood, sweat, and tears every single morning, fighting political Satanism. All these things, he's, you know, I've been with the Second King for, since the beginning, when he came here, just about the beginning, and I know from firsthand experience, he does know how things are going to unfold. He is really being guided every step of the way. And so I think he needs our prayers and support, but I think that's the future of Sanctuary Church, is to be, you know, to be obedient to the Second King. Father said absolute love, absolute faith, and absolute obedience. And that obedience is being in alignment with God, and let's just hold on to the Father and the Second King, and that's the future of the Sanctuary Church.
Okay, any more, I think we're about to wrap it up. Maybe I can make one final comment, picking up something that Roseanne said, I don't see her here right now, but we're all-
Ivan Jenner has a question, right?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I was-
One more submitted.
Okay, okay, all right, this one, Ivan Jenner. How long are Hyun Jin and Kuk Jin, board directors of Sanctuary Church Community, going to continue to allow Jamal and Robert to verbally abuse Lourdes's words at Sanctuary Church on Facebook and on YouTube? Okay, my answer to that is that hopefully, by having an open meeting like this, people can actually talk with each other instead of calling each other horrible names. I have to say, I totally disagree with some calling people bitch, eunuch, s- son of bitch, and that's even the mildest thing. I, to me, we are brothers and sisters in Christ's community, and for you to call my sister Lourdes a bitch, to me, is very, very wrong, very wrong, okay? And I totally disagree. If you have a disagreement with her, then go tell her, and tell her why you don't like what she did, okay? But these insulting names are satanic, that's my perspective. Calling the daughter of God a bitch, or a son of God, you know, son of bitch, or whatever the vile name, to me, that's simply wrong, okay? And that's how I see it. And I hope we can grow up, and if you have a problem with Lourdes, or me, or Tim, or Greg, then talk to us, but don't go on Facebook. To me, that's a very cowardly thing to do, in my opinion.
I think, just to add to that, especially to those who are under Father's authority, and the first responders, as the King has brought up on multiple occasions, these are the people very precious to God, and, you know, if you want to call a pedophile a bitch, or a son of a bitch, that's fine, you know, because the King does that all morning long on the King's Report, but his bullets are pointed outward. We do not use, we should not use that language amongst ourselves, and support what Richard said, but I think that kind of vile language is appropriate when you're dealing with people who are really promoting satanic culture throughout the world. And that language, and I think Father himself used that language, and certainly the Second King uses that language, but it's at the enemy of God, not brothers and sisters who gave up everything to support the Second King.
I'd like to add a little bit. The question asks, how long are A, B, C, and D going to allow E and F to do a certain thing? And you have to ask, where does the authority lie to allow or to disallow? Does it align with Hyung Jin, Kuk Jin, Board of Directors? Do they have the authority to allow or disallow this kind of behavior? Now, the fourth one is Sanctuary Community. I think actually, Sanctuary Community probably has more, most of the authority, in fact, the only one there that has authority to disallow. So I think this gets to the idea of ownership consciousness, that the community has to take ownership over this kind of a situation. The Board of Directors of the World Peace and Education Sanctuary has no authority to either allow or disallow anyone's statements on Facebook, or- So that would be my answer to this question, in addition to what was already been said.
Okay, with that, I think we can bring our meeting to a close. Just a final comment I'd like to make, as I was gonna say, Roseanne made a very good scriptural comment, we're all the Body of Christ. I want to thank everyone here, whether, even if you didn't say, or have a question or a comment, you're here, you're a part of the Body, not one part is more important than the other, right? Even, we're an invisible part, like a tooth, if our tooth's got a cavity in it, we pay attention to it, right? We're all, we're all a part of the Body of Christ, and that's unique under Hyun Jin's guidance and Father's guidance, of course. And that, I think, is what sets us apart from anything else. So thank you, everyone that's here today, and everyone that's concerned, that's out in the worldwide sanctuary. Can we close with a prayer? Dear heavenly Father, we're here for one reason, true Father, anointed Hyung Jin. Father gave His entire life, we have no clue how much He invested, how much He suffered through a course of 10,000 crosses, and so many victories as well, as He built up the Worldwide Foundation, and He gave that over to Hyun Jin. And He is still the light of the world, shining down from the spiritual world to Hyun Jin. Father, we know that You're guiding him directly every step of the way. We want to help, Father, we want to help Hyung Jin, how heavy is his burden? We don't maybe think about that often enough. Let us be mindful of how much He sacrificed and has given up His entire life now to be respond, to be a good response to Father's direction and authority as He leads him. We want to be helpful, Father, let us find the way that we can create our own ministry, that we can create our own activity, Father, that we can contribute in the unique way that You will guide us through our conscience and through our spirit to contribute to the Kingdom, Father, and really step up as the kings and queens of Chanyul Guk. So we're grateful for this time together, Father, we honor You that You brought through everyone that was involved, especially through Richard, to organize this event. And this day, we want to offer it into Your hands now. Please, Father, carry us forward from this, as we close this meeting. Father, let us go forward with a new heart and a new spirit. We pray this in the name of each one represented here, Haji.
Haji.